Like to call this meeting Lakewood City Council for Monday, February 4th to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Barth, Councilmember Bokey, Councilmember Bran Sutter, Councilmember Moss, Councilmember Simpson, Deputy Mayor Whalen, Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. Now would you all please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flag sleeve.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For those of you who are following along with the sheet music, both the Youth's Council report and Clover Park School District report will be removed from the agenda due to their snow day. We now move to public comment. This is a time when any member of the public may wish to speak to any issue, whether or not it is on the agenda. Please identify yourself by name and city of residence when called, such as Mary Moss, Lakewood, Washington. We do have a public hearing tonight regarding wireless service facilities. If you wish to speak at the public hearing, you're free to participate in the public comment at this time, but your comments will not be on the record for the public hearing unless you speak at that time, which will be following on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The yellow light comes on at thirty seconds as a warning. The red light comes on when your time's complete. First person who's signed up is Mr. Dennis Howden.
Dennis Howden, Lakewood, Washington. The video I show you, I showed you six years ago. It has to do with a big question. The question is, how long before elected officials can get a fire lit on them and do something about something serious? About fifteen years ago, Pat Finnegan, doing due diligence as a city councilman, asked the question, "All of these people that can't speak English, where did they come from? Are they legal or are they illegal?" Perfectly good question to ask if you're responsible. Then sometime after that, we lost nine police officers, or four police officers. Another big question. We were taking in three for every one parolee from other cities. Nobody got excited about that. Should have been a big issue. Then after that, two legislators did their own investigation and discovered that there was food stamps going to people more than one, more than they should get. No investigation. Should have brought on a professional investigation. This year had to do with, if you remember, in fact, I gave you a book, Hannah Giles O'Keefe. It was a big operation called Acorn at that time, nationwide, partially funded by the federal government. And they were to help people with everything, finding a loan, finding a house, finding a rental, starting a business, how to deal with the IRS, all that stuff. So they posed as a prostitute and a pimp, ready to bring thirteen-year-old girls out of El Salvador and start a prostitution business, and they were given the advice on how to do it. So they take this over time and whatnot. Anyway, what's coming up is the national, you know, the speech by the president. Believe me, he's very knowledgeable. He's been down in the front several times. What are you trying to say? Been down in the front several times. He knows what's needed down there with the gate. Nancy Pelosi and all the rest of your representatives. Heck, Murray, never been there. And right now, the beneficiary to Nancy Pelosi's position and the president of Mexico's position, the cartel is the beneficiary. It's gonna be an interesting night tomorrow night. What was it? You couldn't hear? You couldn't hear me?
Not very well. It's pretty terrible.
Well, you haven't listened to me for fifteen years anyway.
All right, thank you. The next person who's signed up is Tom McClellan.
Good evening. I'm Tom McClellan from the city of Lakewood, and I'm calling to ask the seven of you to come to an action to reconsider the plan for how the city is gonna manage and treat Wahop Lake. It was two years ago, you were presented with a study by the consulting firm Brown and Caldwell. It was the third study by experts on lake management, all three of which recommended that the lakes' sediments that are full of phosphorus need to be dredged. The difference in the Brown and Caldwell study is that they said, "Well, as an intermediate measure, you could apply a treatment with aluminum sulfate, which would inactivate the phosphorus for a short time at a cost of a little over $200,000." And the council voted to accept that plan. The city staff have interpreted your action in voting to accept that plan as though you want them to move forward with an allen treatment, even though the plan itself recommended moving forward with the dredging. The city staff has then pursued further, and rather than just a little over $200,000, the estimate of what's gonna be required according to Tetra Tech is in a neighborhood of three-quarters of a million dollars. So before we proceed down this road much further, I think it's time that you reevaluate all of the recommendations that have been proposed to you over time. Take it up as a council agenda item, have a study session, lay all the facts out on the table, look at all of them, and hear from experts on every side so that the city can arrive at a proper destination. One of the objections to moving forward with the dredging plan earlier was that the city doesn't have the money. That's not a requirement. It's the state's responsibility. Now, I've been told that the 1970 lease, which was between Pierce County and the state to take over operating of the park, which the city has now taken over, obligates the tenant, which is now the city, to take care of all the maintenance costs of the park. But, in another section, the state reserved to itself the right to use and maintain all water features in the park, which is an interesting term because up through 1965, when the park was a farm, Wahop Lake was part of the water feature, was used for irrigation of the crops. So we should interpret that as the state reserving to itself the responsibility to maintain Wahop Lake and to fix the problem of all the human and farm waste and human sewage from Pierce College that has been dumped in the lake for all these years. It's a case of a property owner, the state, failing to maintain the property and allowing a public nuisance to develop. You tell the property owner, "You gotta clean up the mess," and it's a property owner's job. I would like to ask that the council, if there's two of you here tonight who would agree that that should be placed on the agenda, to please make an agenda for a future meeting, and I will be happy to come speak and share more information than can be done in three minutes. Thank you. Are there two of you?
That's all the people who signed up for the public comment. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment, please step forward. Does anyone else wishes to speak at public comment? If there's anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak, please queue up behind Mr. Spear.
Glenn Spieth, Lakewood. Last Wednesday, I went to look at the street clock, which is in the QFC building, reviewed what's there, what isn't, what looks like it's gonna be functional.
Move the mic over, please.
Doesn't move. I'll get closer. I reviewed the parts that are there, a few things that are broken and missing. One thing that's missing is the motor that drives the weight up and down. So when it goes down, it rewinds and brings the weight up, stops until it... That motor system wasn't working when I saw it, when it was still in place, and it's not gonna work the way it is. Needs some rebuilding. The parts are there. Most of them are probably gonna require some refurbishment. All the parts to make the clock work are there, with the exception of the suspension spring, and that's an easy fix. I would foresee the movement being cleaned and set up and adjusted. The rest of it is all there. There's one broken dial, which I think was probably cracked during an earthquake or something. Anyway, two small pieces have fallen out, and they're still in the dial area. Those can be reassembled and attached. So the clock needs to be probably sandblasted and repainted. That's the most expensive thing that I see. Or it could be put up and used the way it is. That's the way it was for a lot of years, so that could be accomplished, too. It's an antique clock from around turn of the century. It's all original. A little bit of glass needs to be replaced, and other than that, I'll fill out a report to the city on that sometime soon. Think get a little bit busy with the history of Lakewood, so it's gonna take me a little time to get that put together, but I've got lots of pictures and so forth. So, thank you.
Again, that's all the people who've signed up for public comment. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment, please step forward. Does anyone else wish to speak at public comment? Hearing none, I declare public comment closed. Now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of January 14th, 2019. B, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of January 22nd, 2019. C, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $2,538,746.82 for the period of December 16th, 2018 through January 15th, 2019. D, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $4,556,393.2 for the period of December 15th, 2018 through January 25th, 2019. E, motion number 2019-06, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement with Lakewood Water District in the amount of $41,880 for the construction of a roadway water main along Motor Avenue Southwest from Whitman Ave. Southwest to Grovelie Lake Drive. F, motion number 2019-07, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Greater Lakes Mental Health Care in the amount of $162,042 for professional mental health services from January 1, 2019 through December 31st, 2020. G, motion number 2019-08, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the interlocal agreement with West Pierce Fire and Rescue for emergency management coordinator services. H, motion number 2019-09, authorizing the property acquisition of parcel 0219081033 located at 11201 Military Road Southwest, Lakewood, Washington, by condemnation for the purpose, for the public purpose of the city's gateway program. I, resolution number 2019-03, setting Monday, March 18th, 2019 at approximately 7:00 PM as the date for a public hearing to consider the vacation of Seattle Ave. Southwest right-of-way between Pacific Highway Southwest and Interstate 5. J, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of November 27th, 2018. Two, Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board meeting minutes of November 29th, 2018. And three, Planning Commission meeting minutes of December 5th, 2018.
Thank you. Is there any item that any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Bran Sutter.
Mayor, I'd like to remove item F on the consent.
F?
F.
Okay, we'll remove item F. Is there any other item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? I'd entertain a motion for adoption of the consent agenda, less item F, which is motion number 2019-07. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If on favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We now move to motion number 2019-07, authorizing the execution of agreement with Greater Lakes Mental Health Care. Mr. Bran Sutter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, the motion here is to approve a contract to extend for another two years, a very successful program that we have with the police department and partnered with a mental health professional who is in fact a certified counselor and being able to go through and do that. I had one concern about the contract in the way that it was set up, that it requires Greater Lakes Mental Health to provide a mental health professional to work with the police department. And the mental health professional, although it says MHP, is not an actual real certification that has specific qualifications. There are about fifteen or sixteen different licensed professions or categories that can fall under the broader category of mental health professional. We have been well-served since this process began by Ms. Sir, who has been our mental health professional, has done very well, and my understanding is there is an intention that she would continue to serve in that role as an employee of Greater Lakes Mental Health. But this is a two-year contract, and that the, you can't be certain what is going to happen should something arise of where there should need to be a transition to a new individual. And the contract really doesn't spell out the qualifications, other than saying it's a mental health professional, which could be someone who is trained in a significantly different way than Ms. Sir is to be able to go and do that. And while I think we have a really excellent relationship with Greater Lakes, that they understand what our need is and what our intent, it's...I was concerned that the contract is very vague as to the qualifications of the person that would be inserted with our police department. I would much rather that the contract had stated some qualifications that are similar or substantially the same as Ms. Sir has, so that a new person would bring the same skill set to it. Just not a level of detail in the contract that's there. Now, I'm not an expert in this, in this area, so I don't know what the wording really ought to be, other than that it ought to be more specific.
Let's have a question for the city attorney. I reviewed Section 10 of the contract regarding termination, and the way I read it, if we're unsatisfied with the service for any reason, including the provision of a contracted assigned party, that we don't, we're concerned about their qualifications or even their demeanor, we could terminate this on fifteen days' notice. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor Anderson, and members of the council. And the reason I hadn't jumped to the microphone earlier is I did not actually hear a question. I heard concerns, but we're here to answer questions.
Okay. And Chief Zarro, do you have any concerns with the services that have been provided by Greater Lakes?
I do not, and in some regards, I appreciate a certain level of ambiguity in the contract because what that does is allow us to have more of a say and be a little more subjective in who we pick for that. It's not just Greater Lakes feeding us a person. They do that, or they did, at least with Carolyn. We had some say in that. If you get somebody, or if you list out specific criteria that you want that person to have, then what you risk is just getting somebody to check the box for each of those criteria. I would rather have somebody that maybe does fall under the broader category of mental health professional, but then is also the right fit, and that right fit comes from interviewing and some of their experience. So beyond that, I have no concerns with the way it's been run or with the way it's structured.
Any other questions for the chief? Mr. Bran Sutter.
Thanks, Mayor. Chief, I'm sure that the contract doesn't specifically say that you have to agree with the choice.
It doesn't. I will go to what the practice that we've had with them when we selected Carolyn is that we interviewed her prior to her selection for the position. I am, you know, I do still hold a position on the board of directors at Greater Lakes. We, I have some influence there still as far as, you know, what they will or won't do with us. And as the mayor pointed out, there is the termination clause where if there is somebody that they insist on being the right person and turns out to not be, then we do have the termination clause. And it is, the city attorney pointed out, it's actually a fifteen-day notice for termination, so a pretty short notice.
Any other questions? Entertainer motion on motion number 2019-07. Been moved by Ms. Moss, seconded by Mr. Bokey, that we adopt motion number 2019-07. Is there any further discussion? If on favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now move to the regular agenda. This is, this item is Public Hearings and Appeals. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on the proposal to establish interim controls on wireless service facilities.
And for this, we have Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and members of the council, Tiffany Spear, Planning Manager for Special Projects. Starting on page 129 of your packet, you will see a very brief memo from me that is followed by the interim controls the council adopted several weeks ago for wireless service facilities. Since your packet was put together, we did receive comments from both AT&amp;T and Verizon. These were accepted and taken onto the public record, and it was explained that because the interim controls are in place already, these will be reviewed as we move forward to adopting permanent controls when the full 18A package comes to you this spring and summer. With that, I'll answer any questions for you.
Questions for Ms. Spear. Now we move to the public hearing. This is when any member of the public may speak to the issue before the council, which is a proposal to establish interim controls on wireless service facilities. Rules are very similar to the public comment in that you are limited to three minutes with the yellow light. There's a thirty-second warning and red light. When your time is up, please identify yourself by name and city of residence. But the difference being, with respect to the public hearing, is only on the topic of the interim controls on wireless service facilities. The first person to have signed up is Gregory Bush.
Good evening, council members. My name is Gregory Bush. I'm with Wireless Policy Group here tonight on behalf of AT&amp;T. Our offices are in Issaquah. So, AT&amp;T has submitted a letter commenting on the interim ordinance, and I'll briefly sum up our comments here. I won't take too much of your time. We'd like to thank staff for being so responsive and taking the extra time to go over our comments. We appreciate the extra diligence they've shown. And, very briefly, AT&amp;T has a few concerns with the proposed interim ordinance, the adopted interim ordinance, main ones being the technical feasibility relating to AT&amp;T's equipments. And we suggest two changes to the language that would add clarity and improve consistency regarding the FCC order. So that's the general categories of what our comments are. The full details are on our red line, which is part of the packet, I believe. And regarding technical feasibility, the interim ordinance only allows flush mount and pole-top mounted antennas. AT&amp;T's equipment, we prefer to use side-mounted antennas on utility poles, kind of omnidirectional, can-shaped antenna that comes off the side of the pole that lets us get the best coverage at about thirty feet off the ground. That's the sweet spot we want for these facilities. Part of the code is that there's a four-inch offsets, and we prefer to have our equipment twelve inches off. It meets safety regulations, and sometimes utilities have agreements and stipulate how far or close to the pole we can be. As for consistency with federal law, we understand that alternative technological preferences, like flush mount antennas and pole-top mount, it's preempted by federal law. The FCC likes to keep that in their own wheelhouse. And for the clarity, this is just general language changes, and it's all on our red lines. So, we look forward to working with the city in the future, later this year, on the permanent code adoption. Thank you. Thank you.
So, the people who signed up for a public comment, but if you wish, excuse me, the public hearing testimony, but if you wish to testify on this issue, please step forward.
Dennis Hogan, Lakewood, Washington. Let's back up for a minute and look at what the pros do with the regulations. Let's start with Donald Trump. Is okay if you want to add one really regulation, and then look at six or seven others and decide which ones you want to get rid of. This is a regulation that goes along with a whole lot of other regulations, and that stifles business and economic development. There's no question that when he did his deregulation process and they had to look at regulations and get rid of so many for every new one they added. Not that regulations aren't important, that he just shocked the economy with, with growth that was unprecedented. And another person who's a real pro, Nikki Haley. Look at what she did in South Carolina, 73,000 jobs, factory jobs. And her biggest concern was regulations. She stood over regulations, put people over regulations, and made sure that things were done quickly and regulations that were eliminated that weren't needed. See, regulations are made by bureaucrats. Looks like a good idea from a distance. So you hire a college kid, you put him in a room and a typewriter, and he writes regulations. Until you have so many regulations, you're strangled. Ah, you know? Pretty soon you can't move to the right or the left. So when you're building regulations, you look at them, and if it's necessary, and if it's good, yes. But at the same time, simultaneously, be looking at deregulation. I've come on situations in this city where people try to do something, they're hung up, and you've even got more than one bureaucracy, and I always ask for paper trails, and you have paper trails that conflict with each other. That's absolutely deadly to economic growth. Regulations cost money. To put them in place costs money, and if you're not competitive, bye-bye. The jobs go somewhere else, the taxes go somewhere else, and you're left alone, and you're in a bad state. So you gotta be even better as a city. Thank you.
And that's all the people who signed up to testify at the public hearing. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify at the public hearing concerning interim wireless regulations? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing? Hearing ended, declare the public hearing closed. We now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There's none, Mayor.
Is there any new business to come before the council? Then we move to reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call up first our senior policy analyst, Shannon Kelly Fong, to provide the council with a review of our animal shelter contract that we have negotiated with Pierce County Humane Society. And, right now, we'd like, like to review with the council, if the council's so inclined, it would be placed on your February 19th agenda for council consideration. So with that...
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. I'm here tonight to review the proposed animal shelter contract with the Pierce County Humane Society for 2019 and 2020. This item begins on page 169 of your packet. The city currently receives animal sheltering services from the society. In 2018, the city was charged around $91 per animal sheltered at their facility. This included animals that were brought in by the city's animal control officers, stray animals brought into the shelter by citizens of Lakewood. And as a note, not all of these strays were necessarily found in Lakewood. Animals surrendered by their owners, including animals adopted at the society and then subsequently returned to the society. Animals that arrived dead on arrival, and animals that were requested to be euthanized by their owners. In 2018, the total cost for the animal sheltering contract was approximately $97,000. The proposed contract for the society for the next two years would significantly increase animal sheltering costs. Table A lists the animal rates for 2019 and 2020. In 2019, rates would increase to $195, and in 2020, the rates would increase to around $201. Unlike previous years, the city would only pay these rates for the following animal intakes. Animals brought in by the city's animal control officers, which in 2017 was around 191 animals. Stray animals brought into the shelter by citizens of Lakewood. This represents the vast majority of animal intakes. There was around 513 intakes in 2017. And additionally, the city would pay a rate of $50 per animal for animals that are brought in dead on arrival by animal control officers. In 2017, this was around 65 animals. Per the proposed contract, the city would no longer pay a direct cost for animals surrendered by their owners, again, including animals that were adopted and then subsequently returned, animals that arrived dead on arrival by citizens, and animals requested to be euthanized by their owners. Based on these rates, it's estimated that the city's cost for animal sheltering services will be approximately $141,000 in 2019. This represents an increase of around 46% from the 2018 contract costs. Table C lists the 2018 contract costs, as well as the 2019 and 20 contract estimates based on 2017 numbers. In addition to the per-animal costs, per the proposed contract, the city would continue to allow the society to retain revenue from new pet licenses sold at the society, as well as recuperated medical fees and boarding and impound fees. In total, this equates to approximately $14,000 per year, but notably, the society does waive or reduce many of these fees, so this $14,000 represents approximately what would be collected after the society waived or reduced the fees. In my memorandum, I also included the performance audit that was performed on the society's animal sheltering services for Pierce County, and I'd be happy to answer any questions concerning that. But in brief, the report found that the average cost of an animal sheltered at the society in 2017 was around $195. However, this cost did assume that the average hold time per animal was 6.6 days. The proposed contract, as well as our previous contracts, had a hold time of 72 hours, so three days. So, built into that cost would be an additional 3.6 days of sheltering an animal, so this would be time where an animal would be the property of the Pierce County Humane Society. The cost also assumed that a jurisdiction would pay for all special medical expenses, and this was at a rate of around $89 per animal. And notably, per the study, only 15% of animals actually received special medical care. Using data from that report, table F does depict a cost of what a 72-hour hold by shelter function would be, and shelter functions would be receiving, so this would be your basic medical treatment of vaccines, wormers, and flea treatments, as well as your administrative costs for entering data in for an animal. Your kennel care, so this would be your 72 hours of holding and feeding of the animal, and then the health care, which is the special medical rate. In the adoption of the 2019 and 2020 biennial budgets, the city allocated $107,000 for animal sheltering services, including additional days for impounded animals for both 2019 and 2020. As I mentioned earlier, the estimated contract cost will be around $141,000, and this does not include extra days for impounded animals or for other emergency veterinarian costs performed at other clinics. So occasionally, we do have to hold dogs longer for, commonly dogs, but other animals as well, for longer than 72 hours, and the most common reason is for potentially dangerous dog hearings. Extra emergency veterinarian costs are performed when the humane society is closed for holidays or after hours when an animal needs medical attention. If the city elects to adopt this contract, an adjustment to that amount will need to be made in the future. The city, while looking into this contract, also explored alternative options for animal sheltering for 2019 and 2020. However, due to the geographic location of other shelters, cost, and capacity issues, alternative options at this point in time don't appear to be feasible. In the future, the city could continue to work with other local jurisdictions to explore collaborative alternative animal shelterings, such as a regional animal shelter for 2021 or beyond. Given the lack of viable alternative options for animal sheltering, the city should contract with the society for animal sheltering services in 2019 and 2020. It's recommended that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a proposed, the proposed contract, which is your attachment A in my memo, with the society for animal sheltering for 2019 and 2020. This would occur as part of the February 19, 2019 rego, regular city council meeting. This concludes my presentation, but I would be more than happy to answer any questions about the contract or the performance audit.
In, in the discussion, there is a question that says that we would allow the humane society under this contract to retain the revenue for new pet licenses that essentially were purchased at their facility or that they, they would sell. Is the intent that the word "new" there includes both new and renewals?
Per my understanding, that is correct. It would be a new license for a different year.
And what's the rationale for that as opposed for reimbursing them for their administrative costs to process a license and issue a renewal license? I mean, they're, they're, this seems to be a, an area where they're, they're going to be retaining more than their costs for that, and I guess why is that in our best interest?
So previously, to 2015, we actually did have a system, as you described, where we would pay for the administrative costs. And in the 2016, 2017 contracts, it reverted to the system that is going to be, proposed to be carried forward in the 2019 and 2020 contracts. So this is just a holdover language from the past two contracts.
And I guess that I, I'm still not clear why that's better for us. I understand it's easier for them, and it's to their advantage fiscally. Why is that, what is in it about that that makes that a good option for the city?
I would say the, the ease of it for the society is the primary driver for that language being in the contract.
So, Mr. Bransford, maybe, Mr. Bulkey has some exposure to this too, from our day jobs. We can be a little less surgical and dry about our explanation. The leadership at the humane society has changed. They have a very large endowment, which in the past has been utilized primarily to care for animals. They seem to have changed in emphasis to, toward being an advocacy group and are trying to ensure that their care pays for itself. So no matter how these negotiations went, and it's with multiple jurisdictions, not just Lakewood, County, Tacoma, they had a bottom line. So it gets down to all money is green. So those license fees go into a bucket, dead animals go into a bucket, live animals go into a bucket, returns go into a bucket. No matter how you arrange it, they won't provide the service unless they hit a certain number. And they know that everyone is held over a barrel, because there are no alternatives, at least for two years. So here we are. We have to pay, we're required to pay for the core service, and how we arrange it was the negotiation, not how much.
So, Ms. Mayor, if, the way that this is structured, if we were to reduce our licensing fees for all pet owners in the city, this would, that's what drives the, the cost that the humane society charges. They charge whatever we have in our P-skin.
Well, they, then they'd be asking for $200 an animal instead of $185. It, it's just a balloon. Push it one place, it pokes out another.
I, I guess, you know, I guess I recognize that the humane society essentially has a monopoly. I'm off over there. One other question, in our previous discussions of this, and it doesn't seem to be mentioned in the discussion today, but that had to do with the community cats program. And, community cats, under this contract, are someone that brings a, or brings a community cat to the humane society, that, is that fall under the citizen stray category, and we pay for that cat to be processed and put back on the street?
So, when a feral cat would arrive at the society by a citizen, the city would pay for that animal at the animal rates. That feral cat would then be tagged, neutered, and released back to the location or the general location of where they found the feral cat. At that point in time, it becomes a community cat participant. If that community cat was brought back to the society by another citizen, the city would not be charged for returning community cat participant.
Is that, i- 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 is, is that our understanding of what would happen, or is that going to be spelled out in the contract? That with the second time, it doesn't?
Yeah, under, on the contract, under the society Grees 1A4, it does mention specifically excluded from intake to the shelter would be returning community cat participants.
Thank you, thank you.
So double charges are not permitted? I, I have to, I have to comment at a serious note, though. I, I heard some very complimentary reports about your work on this, Ms. Kelly Fong, and that you, you held your own. So thank you on behalf of the taxpayers of Lakewood. Mr. Bulkey, a couple questions. First of all, the three to six day, was that our idea to try to save some money, reducing the stay from six days to three days? Or was that just part of the whole?
So per our previous contracts, we had a 72-hour hold.
Oh, we did.
Per our municipal code, it's actually 48 hours. So one of the things that was discussed was continuing the 72-hour hold, and that's how it's written into our contract, is to continue the 72-hour hold. So we have not had a contract or a code that says we will hold animals for six days.
Okay, so I'm not, I guess I mentioned the six days, I thought there was something on six days in there, but...
Yeah, the, the performance audit found that the average animal stays at the humane society for 6.6 days. However, they weren't able to, you know, know when an animal transitioned into being the property of the society. So after 72 hours, if an animal goes unclaimed, it's no longer being impounded for the city, it's the property of the humane society. So per the performance audit, the $196, it included a 6.6-day hold, which would be animals under the property of the society.
But that was at the humane society's behest, the six days, the, the six point something. That was never in the contract?
Not in our... Not in our contract.
Okay. The, I, I, just for the record, the, if a citizen picks up a cat or a dog, takes it to the Humane Society like a good citizen would, and they say, I get, the Humane Society then says, well, where did you find the dog? Or are you a citizen of, and I say Lakewood, and then we immediately get charged? When are we told as a city? How, how often are we updated on how many animals we're actually paying for? Are we billed monthly or are we told on a daily basis? Oh, someone brought in four dogs yesterday that you're getting charged for now? And how do we find out about this?
We do receive monthly reports on the intake animals and, um, with this last round of negotiations, we've all agreed to have, uh, more concise record keeping, more itemized record keeping, and in addition to also meet on a quarterly basis, um, to discuss any issues that we see with the reports that we're receiving or the animal control care.
Are the number of stray animals going up or down or sideways in Lakewood?
It's a, it's a little hard to parse out that data based on how the Humane Society had been maintaining their records in previous years. Um, so what I can tell you is the number, uh, complete number of animals brought into the Humane Society. And again, can't parse it down based on whether they came in as ACOs or as citizen strays, um, or as returnees, but the animals, the animal number seems to remain fairly consistent across the years.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, when we've had this discussion earlier, we talked about looking outside for another source. So was this the best source other than going elsewhere? For the service?
We did consider other alternatives, um, but again, uh, the Humane Society is centrally located. Um, to take it to another shelter, we would have to travel a great distance. And in some cases, um, for example, over, over the bridge, um, there are other Humane Societies in the peninsula. There are Humane Societies located in Auburn. There are Humane Socii- or not a Humane Society, but there's also animal sheltering, um, in Thurston County. But for each of those locations, they would add additional time for our officers, our ACO officers. Um, in addition to the costs were not, um, they were on par with what the Pierce County Humane Society, um, was providing. Or the other shelter, um, didn't have the capacity to take our level of animals in. Um, again, we're looking around 700 animals, 750 animals per a year. So having a shelter immediately have that, uh, increase is problematic for some of the smaller shelters located in the area.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much. Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, I'd like to call up our Assistant City Manager for Community and Economic Development to give you a briefing on a proposal that we have to move forward with amending a zoning classification over on the property that used to be Fort Silicon Golf Course.
Good mor- good morning, excuse me. Uh, good evening. Um, you have a, before you, a brief memorandum from myself through the city manager that talks about changing the zoning for a specific piece of property in the vicinity of Oak Brook and behind Western State Hospital. I'll show that on the map in just a minute. Uh, this came about as a result of a conversation the manager and I had concerning the closure of Fort Silicon Golf Course. And it's been the, um, position of the city that if we have golf courses, we zone them OSR2. And if golf courses are no longer in place, um, our position has been to zone them OSR1. If you look at the map, for golf courses, it's down in the OSR. Our is on the OSR. And here we have a country of golf course, which is also another OSR2 zone. This section, which is down in the cemetery, which is allowed as a, a use in our current OSR2 zone.
It's, um, low impact recreation.
That cemetery also has other, uh, features, including a funeral parlor, as well as, uh, as places to take care of bodies in different formats. So it's a very active cemetery. So the proposal before you is basically a request to change the zoning, not the comprehensive plan designation of approximately 91 acres from OSR2 to OSR1. Um, you have a figure, a table one, which describes the different uses on the pro- or ownership or taxpayer of record information, as well as the acreage of the properties. Um, you also have a map, uh, attached, which is your last page of your agenda packet, which outlines, um, the, the area that is being proposed for amendment. This is immediately north of the current Western State Hospital site. And if this is something the City Council wants to do, we would bring it back as a, uh, resolution to amend the zoning code, uh, at your next regular meeting, and we would add it to the Planning Commission docket for the upcoming year. Again, this is not a comprehensive plan amendment, but a zoning code amendment. And that really concludes my remarks, and I'm more than happy to take any questions that you may have.
I'd just like a little clar- clarity on the, uh, ownership of the map I see. Can't tell what parcel is the one that ends in 22 that's Pierce County's. I see the one that's kind of an extension of the Chambers, what I would call the Chambers Creek Gulch, which is 23, which is in the upper left of the map.
Well, first of all, let me just point out, when we see taxpayer of record, that may not be the property ownership. That's who's, who is, who is recorded with the county assessor as to who that agency or entity might be. And as you can see, there are a number of different ones, and it's called out differently. State of Washington, Pierce County Parks, State of Washington Department of Natural Resources, and then, um, Pierce County Parks or portion thereof. And that one, O22, is found in the, the south. It's the parking lot area. That you see next to the baseball field, which is administered by DSHS. Yes. I, I recognize that the taxpayer of record data is confusing, but I thought I would share it with the council just to let you know what this looks like.
Questions for Mr. Viewer? Mr. Branstad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. B- Mr. Viewer, in your, in your memorandum, there's not much of a justification for why make the change. I mean, there, it says, "The golf course closed, so it's a good time to look at it."
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's, some of the parcels have a lot of tree canopy.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I'm not quite sure how I get to that, those facts of saying it ought to go from two to one. I guess the question is, and your memo says that one is more restrictive than two. So what are we trying to preclude happening on these parcels by making the change?
Well, i- in a general sense, what the city, well, what the proposal is, is does the City Council want to consider a more exclusive open space zoning district for this area or not? Now, there has been some discussion with Western State Hospital about a proposed master plan, that if they were to propose new hospital facilities, there is a potential that this could go on this site. That places it closer to existing residential uses, and in my opinion, has some relatable impacts to existing activities on the site with respect to open space, the tree canopy, canopy, and the preservation of Garrison Springs and other open space areas that are also found in that area. And if you'll pay attention to an email that was sent to you earlier this evening, we have prepared a five and a half-page response to the proposed master plan that discusses this in some detail. So, does the council wish to do this? I can say that from a practical application of our open space regulations, our purpose and intent in the past has been, if it is to be a golf course, then it stays OSR2. But if the golf course closes, is this the appropriate time to change the zoning to OSR1? And that's really a question for the council. You, you don't have to do this if you don't want to.
So with respect to DSHS's desire to develop the property in a way that would have some public institutional use, that would require them to request a zoning change or other things through, through, through processes to be able to go and do that? That, um, let's anticipate that citizens would not like the hospital moved north to be in their backyard on these, on these parcels. That, does the difference between OSR1 and OSR2 influence that process or the, 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 those decisions at all?
It can, Mr. Branstad, but also that's done in, in relationship with also our city's critical areas ordinance, which goes part and parcel with the development or the use of the OSR1 and 2 zoning districts. And you do have some critical areas on some of these parcels that we're talking about this evening.
So right now, predominantly, this is owned by DSHS or another state agency. That, um, but they're limited to developing it to approve uses that are in our open state and regulation ordinances. There, and there are some differences between one and two. Um, but essentially, they could develop it in a way that would be with similar uses to the ones that exist in Fort Silicon Park. For instance, since that's OSR1 if we were to change it. And that there were some, some to do that. Uh, you know, we, as you are constantly reminding us, that when we do things like this, that's work for you, your staff, the Planning Commission, and, you know, and I, I guess that, you know, it, it does seem that it's work with, and, and putting this change into this cycle, you know, where we've already taken things out of the cycle because of the workload, uh, seems, um, yeah, I, I don't know, a, a make-work exercise to, to be able to, uh, go and do that. I mean, this is, um, I mean, I, I, I guess, how much work is this? Are we really adding on to the Planning Commission and you and your staff? If we say move forward with, um, this, this is a zoning, you know, map change, but not a text amendment, is that what we, what, what, what you're, what you're recommending?
At this time, what this recommendation, I mean, be very clear with this. First of all, the City Council, if you want to do this, we would be, bring back a resolution for you to review and approve. All that's basically saying is move forward for consideration, uh, city manager and staff. Then we start the public hearing process. Then we do the SEPR review. Then we go to the Planning Commission for a public hearing. Then we come to the City Council for a public hearing. From start to finish, this could take approximately four to six months. It is not necessarily a part of the 2019 docket. It's a separate item because it's considered to be not associated with the comprehensive plan per se and would be considered, actually, this would be considered quasi-judicial. So it would come to you guys first as a qua- oh, excuse me, I have to think this through. This would become as a quasi-judicial item before the hearing examiner. This would not come before the, the Planning Commission or City Council.
So, so what you're saying, this would be a type of a change that would fall under the quasi-judicial process that we are going to consider approval of shortly?
Yes.
And it would be a city recommended spot zoning, site-specific zoning change that would re- re- require a quasi-judicial process?
Yes.
And so we would end up with a situation of where the city would present its case to the hearing examiner and the property owners, the various state agencies, would also then be able to opine their views to the hearing examiner who would make a decision, one way or the other. Uh, and then theoretically, if who would have standing to appeal that through the quasi-judicial process to the council?
Okay, well, first of all, let me back up a little bit on this. And I'm getting over a head cold, so I'm not fully here, so my apologies. The one part I wanted to make about the hearing examiner, it's not as simple as a yea or nay. The hearing examiner could do something different and actually put on conditions of, of control upon what that amendment might look like. So I want to be very clear with the, with the full council. Quasi-judicial gets into also some other areas sometimes referred to as contract zoning, which is similar to what we have with PDDs. So just be aware that this could go in different directions. If, if the hearing examiner makes a decision, if there is an appeal, there is a specific language that requires that that appeal cover only very specific issues of whether the hearing examiner erred. That's my understanding of this. So the level of appeal review would be very narrow. As to who, who would be the appellants, the appellants could be, for most likely, would be the underlying property ownership of the State of Washington.
Okay, so, so my, my concern is, is if we open up this process, theoretically, the hearing examiner, listening to everybody that moves in to do that, could decide that the appropriate could decide that the appropriate zoning for one or more of these parcels is public institutional?
He might, but I don't know that, and
And we don't know that, but he could. He's not restricted to the, should it go from OSR two to one? He's, he, once we open it and people bring things before him, he could make a decision about the zoning that is broader than just between those two. And, you know, I don't know if that's a door we want to open. And really, we don't like what the hearing examiner does. This is kind of odd because then the city could appeal to the council.
I'm not sure that's how it would be handled in that way. But I would also say, if you take a look at the way in which the city has administered the open space zoning districts, I can make a very strong argument that applying the public institutional sum would be an inappropriate decision. And if there were something wrong on that level, I'm not, I would have to speak with the city attorney. If the city were to appeal that, would it be back to the council or would it be straight to Superior Court? I just don't know right now.
But were I DSHS, that's what I'd ask for if the zoning is going to change. I mean, that's what I'd, well, I think that, my thoughts on this is that I'd rather get, have, before we decide to move forward, I'd really want to know whether this is be something that would go into the regular comprehensive plan update, or whether it would become a quasi judicial thing, in which case then, I'm not sure how much we can discuss it. But, so that would be the clarification that I would want to know. And then it becomes not deciding until we actually decide what our quasi judicial procedures are.
Your quasi judicial amendment is coming forward in February. You'll be seeing that very soon.
Thank you.
Just a question, Mr. Buer, looking at the map and historic usage. When I'm looking at the big parcel that's to the north of Western State that's currently OSR two, topographically, that's different than the one, two, three other parcels to the north of that line that would also be part of the proposal to go from OSR two to one, right?
Yes.
So those three parcels or four to the north seem to be in a much more topographically sensitive state. That would make more sense to be OSR one as opposed to two. Is there an option just to leave the lower half, which is parcel one zero zero seven, and maybe one zero two two is OSR two? Because we may want to park there someday as more of an active park as opposed to very passive recreation in the ravines that the northern parcels have?
You could parse this out, yes.
To me, if we were to move forward, that would be my recommendation. Still precludes the kind of active public institutional development that may be at issue. But it may make more sense to have the topographically flat area remain as OSR two in the event we want to do something by way of a park for the community someday. And the other area provides a buffer between the Oakbrook neighborhood and any development in Western State. My thought.
Mr. Woki?
Thank you. I didn't realize there were so many different parcels. So, so the four zero two three, which I guess would be in the northwest corner, that would, that would be, as the deputy mayor was saying, ecologically significant because I think that's on a, that's a ravine, correct? Or that's the beginning of the
That's the beginning of the Garrison Ravine and Creek as well as the, there's a hatchery back there.
Three oh zero, three zero one three is interesting. It's just a little parcel and looks like it's almost really part of Oakbrook rather than, so what is that?
That is actually a zone, single-family residential.
Okay, so that is zone, so it's a little dip in there. And then in the far northeast corner, three zero two six, that's a lot where they play frisbee golf and that is adjacent to the neighborhood. So does the OSR two, that allows golf? OSR one, in your opinion, would that allow the frisbee golf? Because those guys are still out there. I don't know if they're supposed to be, but they're still out there.
The OSR one zone would allow for activities similar to that, yes.
Okay. Okay, I'll just leave it at that. Now, do they have wells? Because I'm reading this other stuff that you sent out tonight. There's wells on the property. Do they have wells?
There are wells. There's a natural spring at Garrison Springs. That's where, up until 1939, Western State receives all of its water for operations, including the agricultural uses and care and feeding of the cattle. So that's a large well that, those, that spring is also used, has been used in the past as spring water for hatcheries. So there are some well sites on this property that has some level of significance.
And are wells an allowable use in OSR one and OSR two?
I'd have to go back and check. Wellheads are allowed in the OSR two zone, but I would, I would need to go back and take a look at this in greater detail. Just to let you know, in order to figure this out, you have to use eighteen A thirty plus eighteen A twenty and go back and forth many occasions before you can figure it out. We do allow for essential public facilities of some types in the OSR one zone. And we have seen, I believe, wells in other locations. I'd have to check, Mr. Woki.
So how does, how does it happen? If I say, if I'm the state of Washington and I say essential public facility, how does that mesh in the minds of, I guess, the growth management people when this immovable force versus the whatever object, whatever they call that, the desire for open space versus, we're the state of Washington and this is a public institution and you don't have the right to stop it under the Growth Management Act? Who, what case law do we have in regards to that?
I'm not prepared this evening to get into case law on public institutional and essential public facility uses. I know that Eileen McCain and I had several discussions. One of the more significant cases had to do with the expansion of Sea-Tac Airport. That was a big issue related to this question. But in relationship to, you know, this particular project, in some respects, what, you know, we're asking through the Growth Management Act and as a part of this whole discussion with the expansion of Western State Hospital, is this the most appropriate location? They've already committed to doing EIS. That also means they have to come up with alternatives. Those alternatives include other sites other than Lakewood. So that's a part of the process through the SEPR process. In addition to the Growth Management Act, and this is a conversation or comments you'll hear in the email that was sent earlier this evening, does Growth Management Act basically say you can use a piece of property, use it all up, and then when you're done with it, leave the buildings in place and then go onto another vacant piece of property and build on that and leave all the inherent structures in place and abandon them? Our position is though, that's not the case at all. You know, and that's why we're having this discussion with the Western State Hospital master plan, which is a part of our code with respect to public facilities, the PI zone as well as its relationship with essential public facilities under the state's law. There's always this conflict, and will continue to be a conflict. And a good case of this is under essential public facilities is the term group homes. That's adult family homes. And the state's done a very good job, effective job of parsing that out and creating under preempting zoning controls, but also going as far as into the building codes so that they are almost a protected type of use and activity for the state. So those things are in constant state of discussion. And we have lots of public institutional uses, essential public facilities in Lakewood. Junior colleges, elementary schools, high schools, hospitals, St. Clair, for example. All those are basically essential public facilities in some fashion or extent. And we've been able to work in those particular areas and resolve things through a master planning process. But Western State Hospital is different. And the reason it's different is because they let their facility go. And now they want to do something with it, and we're saying, hold off, let's talk about this. And that's the big difference between Western State and the other institutional or essential public facilities in Lakewood.
So it's our contention that they have room to build. They don't need to go into the open space?
Our contention, that's one of our contentions, yes. Another one would be, you know, is it still feasible to continue to build on the existing site? And the answer most likely is no, because you've allowed the water system, the sewer system, the electrical system, the, all those utilities to become deficient. We now know that because we're looking at another expansion to the Child Treatment Study Center and they're telling us they're not going to allow for an expansion using the existing electrical system on site. So, you know, if you're going to fix it, let's fix it and do it the right way. Or if it's too expensive to do it and this area is now more urban than it needs to be, perhaps there's another location for your facility in the future. And there's some acknowledgement on some members of their staff to that effect. I don't mean to go off on this or lecture.
No, I appreciate it. Thanks.
So going back to Mr. Wayland's comment about the possibility of, you know, creating a east-west line of division and having the northern section essentially reduced to OSR one, leaving the bottom half roughly as OSR two, it would appear that given the environmental sensitivity of the majority of the northern portion, that there would be a heavier lift for anyone wishing to utilize that for a more intensive use. Is, if we did that, say that, and just assume that's a defensible position that was very difficult to overcome, is there an argument through the environmental review process, if Western State wants to build on parcel ending one zero zero seven, that their mitigation should be bringing their existing facility down to ground level and creating compensating open space, which could then be part of Fort Silicon Park?
That's one option. One of the things too that we've explained to them is, you know, parcel ending with one zero zero seven requires a comprehensive plan amendment. And so that's a part of the 2020 docket that they'll need to submit for if they wish to move forward. So that's, that's another piece. But there's a series of moving parts here, Mr. Mayor, that we can accommodate.
So what I'm thinking is if the state decides to statutorily run over us and change the law on us with respect to the zoning aspect of it and essential public facilities, which I assume they can do, that that would still leave environmental mitigation as an option, which would allow us to litigate them into the ground for years?
Yes. In fact, if we are looking at doing an EIS, if the plan is to move forward with a project here in Lakewood and there's a loss of open space, City of Lakewood and one of its comments, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves here, but the City of Lakewood and one of its comments would be the city wants compensation for the loss of open space.
Thank you. Any other questions? So, are you looking for guidance?
If you'd like to provide me some, yes. What I think I'm hearing from the council is you would like to consider a resolution amending the zoning for parcels ending in forty twenty-three, thirty twenty-seven, and thirty twenty-six from OSR two to OSR one.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
I'm sorry to take so much time on this.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Caulfield?
Just a few items, Mayor. Just like to follow up with a comment, at public comment. So as part of your February twenty-fifth study session, we do plan on providing an update regarding Wahop Lake. At your next regular meeting on the nineteenth, Chief Zaro will be here to provide you an update on fourth quarter crime statistics. And it looks like crime stats from two thousand eight, from two thousand seven, two thousand eighteen to two thousand seventeen are down one percent. But what I wanted to point out is one of the items you're going to find in that report is that Chief Zaro coordinated with Chief Sharp from West Pierce Fire and Rescue to try and get an understanding on total calls for service for police and fire to our adult family home businesses. And in two thousand eighteen, there was ninety registered adult family home businesses in Lakewood. Those ninety properties, those ninety businesses generated five hundred and fifty-four calls for service, an average of over six per business. Given that those are all located in single-family residential homes, we find that to be a little concerning. Just imagine if your neighbor or yourself was having, on average, six calls for service. Six calls for service, that would certainly raise some alarms. However, as you look into the detail, there's the good, the bad, and the ugly. And the really ugly is that there are fifteen of those businesses that have ten or more calls for services between police and fire, including two that have twenty-two. Earlier this morning, I was down meeting with Representative Kilduff, talking with her on a number of issues. And I brought this up to her that we were going to have these numbers. I didn't have the specifics at my fingertips when I was talking to her this morning, unfortunately. But we're going to follow up with her office as well as our other legislators and share that. But I wanted to just share that with you in anticipation of you're going to see that here in the near future. But again, we're going to share that with our legislators, particularly since Representatives Kilduff, Representatives Levitt, as well as Senator O'Ban are introducing bills regarding adult family home businesses. So just wanted to share that. More to follow, more to follow. Mr. Buer talked about the follow-up to the request that we received from DSHS regarding, according to the TNT, their conceptual plans out at the former golf course. Though when they were meeting with us, they were coming across that this was one of their two primary options. So, a little confused, but that's fine. Long story short, we did follow up based on what they asked and we provided a very detailed response. And we have shared that with the council. And certainly, if you have any questions on that, please feel free to let myself or Mr. Buer know. We had a little bit of inclement weather this past weekend, had some flurries around here. We did not get hit as bad as other parts of the Puget Sound. I do want to commend our maintenance and operations crew, which have been working around the clock since the day before yesterday and will continue to do so this evening, dealing with not just snow, but also putting down salt and other materials to try and keep the ice from forming. Though we will probably lose that, lose that battle somewhat. Public Works Engineering Department was notified by the Department of Ecology last week that they have received a seventy-five thousand dollar grant to help stand up the American Lake Management Plan, that district. And we expect to provide you a more detailed update to you on March eleventh. We're hoping to have feedback from the neighbors as well as the two military installations on where they are with standing up that district. The rental housing safety program will be providing a year-end report to the council as part of your March eleventh study session. Wanted to point out, really quite frankly, some unbelievable statistics. The inspections that occurred in two thousand eighteen, remember, this is the first year that this occurred, represented thirty-seven percent of the proportional rental housing stock in the whole city. That's absolutely phenomenal. Real credit to Jeff Gumm and his team, as well as our private contractors who we had on call to help us, to help us with this. But again, a more comprehensive report will be coming forward. I'm sure the council will be pleased with what they see. We have heard, actually, not heard, we have read, actually, and heard to some extent, that Congress could be bringing back earmarks. There has been that discussion. Earmarks went away, I think, in two thousand ten. And there has been some talk that they Earmarks went away, I think, in 2010, and there has been some talk that they could come back. And so we have been having some discussions internally about trying to identify some projects. So when we're back in DC this week, if that issue does come up, we'll at least be able to be prepared to address it. It did come up last year, then quickly died. Just kind of given the state of government, though, back in DC, I don't know. I, I am trying to be cautiously optimistic. But again, if it does come up, we're certainly well positioned to identify a couple of projects. And just to throw a couple out would be to do the final leg of Lakewood Drive in front of Flet Creek that's shovel-ready. Another one would be the traffic signal here at Gravelly Lake Drive in Avondale is part of our sub-area plan. And, you know, there's a couple others that we can, that we can identify and be ready to go if and when there is an opportunity. If you look at your council calendar, as we look out beginning tonight, all the way through, through the summer, quite a bit in the area of land use policies, everything from the quasi-judicial municipal code, sign code, Title 18A, the comp plan amendments, the shoreline master program. And of course, all that runs through the planning commission first. And so we are going to try and stay on task on that. However, I do want to be clear, at the end of the day, it is council's prerogative, if you want to, you know, slow that, slow that process down, take more time, or however you want to handle that. But again, we just wanted to let you know that we are, we have it calendared out, and we're moving forward on a number of fronts there. There was previous discussion and questions about the Salary Commission, actually, the Independent Salary Commission. And so we plan on kicking that off on April 15th to advertise notice of vacancies. That will continue for a little bit, and then the mayor will, will make his appointments as prescribed in our code, and then the council will have an opportunity to approve that. And then, basically, the, the way we have it timed out is the Independent Commission would then have their first meeting on or about July 9th or July 10th. Your calendar, as we look out in February and March, actually, if you're looking for something really fun, on Thursday evening, there'll be a mod pizza takeover in support of the local AUSA Lakewood Subchapter, and that's from 5:30 to 8:00 PM. This Saturday evening, there's the Father Daughter Dance. On Sunday, the Lakewood Playhouse is having their annual gala event and fundraiser. And if you can't attend that, they do have an opportunity where you can donate online. And then next week, on February 13th and 14th, are AWC's annual city action days. We are looking to schedule some time with our legislators from 28th and 29th District. I know one or two of them are not available, so we'll be meeting with them later on in the week. And once we have that nailed down, we'll share that with you. On February 27th, the Pierce County Executive, Bruce Danmeyer, is getting together the whole issue of the PSRC regional engagement as a follow-up to a meeting he had right before the holidays. So that will be on the 27th of February, and it will be in Puyallup, I'm sorry, correction, at the Pierce County Annex. And then the next evening, on February 28th, the Boys and Girls Club is having their annual Legacy of Hope event at the Hotel Murano. On March 7th, the Tacoma Pierce County Economic Development Board is having their annual, annual meeting, and the city has secured a table of 10. So if you're interested in attending, let, let us, let us know if you want to sit at the city table, and we'll make sure we reserve a seat for you. And then on March 14th, the Emergency Food Network is having their annual recognition breakfast. It's a little special this year for, for Lakewood. The City of Lakewood is being presented with a corporate and civic partner award, and then the Lakewood Police Department is being recognized for their fallen officer's food drive with a silver spoon award for the Helen McGovern Pilates substantial collection event. And that will be in Puyallup at the Pioneer Park Pavilion, and that's on, that's, that's a morning event from 7:30 to 8:45. That's what I have on the calendar. And then just real quick, on the legislative front, it's very, very busy down there. We've been actively engaged, you know, pretty much on a daily, on a daily basis there. I will tell you, I'm kind of looking forward to the policy cutoff date of February 22nd to truly see what's alive. But we are staying engaged on a number of fronts, and I want to thank members of the council who have been providing some feedback and input on that as well. So we will stay, stay on track on, on that. With that, Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. Questions for the city manager? Mr. Whalen?
Just a brief question on your comment about bringing back the Wahop Lake for some update on our study session. What's the focus of the, the brief back, do you know?
It will be to move forward with the alum treatment.
Okay. I just wanted to know why they were going to bring it back, if that's been the recommendation. Is there going to be some discussion about the, the herbicide versus alum? Because we've heard, all of us have heard a lot of chatter about that. I know we're not interested in dredging talk per se, but what about the herbicide application, which apparently is cheaper than the alum that we decided on?
Yeah, we'd be more than happy to follow up with those questions on, on, on February 25th, Deputy Mayor. The reason we're bringing it back to you is we just want to keep you appraised of what's going on, based on your policy direction. Certainly, it's your prerogative if you, if you don't. We just like to keep you updated on what's going on.
I will leave it up to the panel. I don't need to hear a whole lot, but to the extent there's a cost savings, and if it would be efficient, I don't recall what we talked about prior, but I don't want to revisit the whole bunch.
My thoughts are, if we're, we're going to take a look to make sure that we're together and moving forward with a good plan for a lake, that the lake that's more important is, as the city manager mentioned, we're getting a grant to deal with the, the milfoil situation in American Lake, which I think is a lot more serious situation in a lake that has a lot more uses in that if we believe the information we have is already perhaps been a contributing factor in at least one death. I, I think, while perhaps I was not a vote that voted to approve the Wahop Lake plan almost two years ago, you know, that's a plan that's been in place, and to relook at it before you take step one of a plan to, to be able to go do that, I, I don't know that that's really worth our time. Okay? I think the, the only new piece of information in the past two years, other than the differing views of all the consultants, was the understanding that the Pierce Colleges had a role in the lake, you know? It was one of those discussions that we had a long time about, what's causing the problem in the lake? And the, and the end result was, there are multiple causes that are going on. They go, but some are, are long-term, some are shorter-term. But, you know, I, I think we're almost at the point of where we take step one before we evaluate it all again, if, since that's what we, that's what we decided to do two years ago. We decided to adopt the Brown and Thing recommendations as our plan to move forward. And we've worked through this. We've got flood control zone district funding to do that first step. And then you can always, that's the point, to do a reassessment, not get started on a reassessment that causes us to miss a whole 'nother year, because there's a window in the spring that you either got to do something or not, and we've put it in the budget.
Mr. Simpson?
I would just like to, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to follow up with what Branstad, Mr. Congressman Branstad said. I agree with him. Also agree with what the Deputy Mayor said. We have worked, particularly on the issue of Wahop Lake, we've worked that over pretty well. We took that vote over two years ago. The vote was six to one. I would only add, and my only concern is that there is no discernible end to the spending of the money. And I, I will conclude, to be precise, since we got off on painting houses and costs, Mr. Mayor, full stop. Thank you.
I, I get back to the best being the enemy of the good. Everybody agrees that if you have a pot lake that has been used as a cesspool for over 100 years, you have a cesspool, and the best thing to do is to clean it out by scraping everything off the bottom and putting it somewhere else, which is totally unrealistic and would come behind, and working on American Lake and Silicon Lake and Lake Louise, every, practically every other lake in the city. And so this is, what's been suggested is an alternative stopgap measure. And we can probably proceed on that course and come up with a different alternative stopgap measure in a couple years without doing anything. So I, I'm in favor of the stopgap measure that we voted for two years ago. We haven't got around to it yet. You could include in the report some embellishment, but we don't want to revisit the whole thing.
Just to add my two cents, I had somebody ask me in the midst of all this, where people are saying, spend $15 million. Someone asked me, well, what, what the lake, what's the lake going to be like even after you do this treatment? And how many times are you going to do this treatment? I said, well, I'm not really sure, you know? And he said, well, if this is going to be the same way it was, why are you spending any money at all? So if we're going to have a debate, that's the option, then. That's the option that I would support. It lets us not do anything, because I have other uses, I have other ideas for that money from the flood control zone district. So if, if, if two council members want to put that on the table, go ahead. But my option, the option that I will propose then is to do nothing, and just let nature take its course and use the money for, and then I have another use for the flood control zone district money that I think actually will help prevent flooding. So.
All right. One final retort, and it's just, we decided years ago, two years ago, Lisa, it's a health and safety issue to avoid the problems with... Oh, you can't hear me? Okay. Maybe that's a good thing. It was the health and safety issues two years ago that prompted us to do something as opposed to nothing, because of the dangerous algae blooms and dogs and feral cats apparently licking the water and getting into trouble and ending up with the Humane Society. Yeah. So my only question on the follow-up was, somewhat along with what you're saying, I mean, I'm, I voted for the alum treatment, but if herbicide, a 59 grand, would quote-unquote "treat" the dangerous condition of the water as opposed to the capping with alum, that would be one thing to look at. I'm not suggesting we do, but that was the only thought about the...
Clarifies it.
Yeah, clarifying comment there.
May I?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
I thought you said you were done.
Well, I changed my mind, which is my point. There's nothing that says we can't change our mind, Deputy Mayor. And I think Councilmember Bokey, I, I agree with the intent of what he's coming about. I mean, it's not about dredging, it's not about, it's just, we have other things we can spend that money on. And as far as I'm concerned, if Wahop Lake becomes Wahop Wetlands in 100 years, then so be it. It'll be well-fertilized wetlands, but it'll be a wetlands because we can use that money elsewhere. So again, and I, I voted, I'm with you on, I voted in favor of that alum. I think it was my friend here, Councilmember Branstad, who did not. And, but in, in retrospect, in thinking this over, and maybe this is a gift, to actually we have a chance now to look at this and look at the cost, which I don't see a discernible end to, that perhaps we could simply say, yeah, let's, let's spend this money elsewhere. And now I will be quiet, sir.
All right. Council comments. Ms. Wilson. Mr. Bokey. Mr. Branstad.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I, you know, I got the, the latest issue of the Public Works Association magazine, and I, I did note that, for the first time in a while, that there are, that three of the professional engineers on our Public Works Engineering staff have now joined this professional organization that has a really good reputation and provides training opportunities and others. So Mr. Barron, Mr. Poxwinski, and Mr. Swannstrom are all cited in the list of new members in this issue, and I think that has potential to pay us some benefits. At the public hearing today, the gentleman from AT&amp;T spoke briefly, he made, he referenced a letter that I did get a comment of, but the, the letter, and he apparently had, has an enclosure noted that, that I didn't, I got a copy of the letter, but not of the enclosure, which apparently contains some, some other detail about recommendations that AT&amp;T had, if that could be made available, maybe not in, in hard copy, but, but online, to be able to go and do that. And I did attend the meeting of the Veterans Legislative Coalition this past Friday, and that group, amongst other things, is, is going to support and sign in and support on the bills to create the Military Taxing District that we're interested in promoting and the bills that are moving forward. And so they're going to be supportive of that. And I, Saturday night, I did attend the, the annual New Year's meeting of the Washington-Tacoma Korean-American Association, representing the city.
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have to report on is, is Friday morning, I was, I spoke to the Senate's Health and Long-Term Care Committee with regard to Senate Bill 5396, which is sponsored by Senator Kaiser from, I believe, Kent. I was the only one to speak in opposition to this bill, and this bill has to do with the increasing of, of adult family members from six to eight. I was joined by Assistant Chief with West Pierce Fire and Rescue, and we, in my, I was the first one of that panel to speak, and we spoke specifically to the intent of the bill. And one of the points that we highlighted was the, to make mandatory sprinkler systems, and that's where my colleague from West Pierce picked it up. I also spoke about concerns with patient to staff ratio, and how well-trained staff would be. And then third, I spoke to the point of traffic mitigation, which, which would, which would probably occur due to increase in traffic in those neighborhoods. I, I thought it was a good hearing. I, I took some, and I, I wasn't aware of this at the time, but I did take some heart when I ran over my time limit. We were given two minutes to speak. At two minutes, I was two-thirds of the way, and the chair let me continue. And I, I liked to think it had to do, because everywhere I went, I was giving statistics, numbers. This is what we've got in Oakbrook, this is what we have in Pierce County, this is what we have here, here. And so I, I thought it was a, I, I thought we were well-received. Now, whether or not I made an impact, that remains to be seen. After the meeting, Senator O'Ban came out, talked with me for a minute. He referenced his Senate Bill 5038, and he mentioned that, I believe, there'll be a public comment on that on the 15th of February. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Whalen?
Thank you very much. I already made my comment on Wahop Lake, so I'll move on to some other more fun things. We had our CE LT meeting with the school board folks on Tuesday after our council meeting on Monday. You, you got an update a little bit on Monday about the progress moved forward, and I'll report back as soon as we have more to tell you. There's a little bit of information in the city manager's letter and report about Fort Silicon Park Pavilion, and how they've reduced the scope of the brick, you know, the memorial brick stuff down in the center facility, because they were going to pave the area in front there to make it more of a flatter surface. I was out there this week. It looks great. great. So, Rotary, and I think maybe the city was helpful out there, but they extended a, kind of a sidewalk area from the front entrance to the proscenium area, if you will. It really just looks fantastic. So, they've done a great job, and then the brickwork will get in there soon, and it'll be ready for the spring. So, that's a good thing. On the adult family home front, I just wanted to give you an anecdotal piece that the hunt for adult family homes in Oak Brook is alive and well. My wife, in her capacity, is a new realtor, was doing an open house in Oak Brook for a family out there, and they had two people come through looking to make offers on this place for an adult family home. So, the issue is alive and well. They didn't accept the offer, by the way. Police blotter, I'm gonna have a, you know, humorous anecdote periodically on the police blotter, kinda like they do in the paper. My friends at the Lakewood Dental Building, over where they're building the Reiner or the Town View Apartments, have had nothing but chronic issues, and the LPD has been very helpful. The latest, you know, they had their trash receptacle burned down. They've had people defecate in their front area. They've had needles all over the place from idiots walking by and dropping stuff. This weekend, they had rocks thrown through their front windows. Like, how much more can a business owner take before they start to say, do we continue to invest? So, I am hopeful, and the chief has indicated he's looking to perhaps come up with a revised plan for greater presence in the central business district, some sort of a roaming presence like they did with the bike patrols, you know, perhaps during the Christmas season, just something where there's more presence. There's a lot of knuckleheads doing dumb stuff out there, and it's really starting to get to some of our business owners. And I, I'm hopeful that we can continue to work on the low-hanging fruit and do the small things that matter, and part of that is having more active presence to keep the knuckleheads at bay, because there are plenty of them. It's like the Bermuda Triangle, between Fifty-Ninth, Lake Grove, and Gravely Lake. It's just unbelievable. So, that, that's all I have. Yeah, it's unbelievable.
All right. You know, when, when, when those calls for service statistics were, were read, it occurred to me that I, I've been in Lakewood now just over thirty years. There have been two calls for service at my house. One about two weeks after we moved in, when the cable guys drilled into the gas line, and then Lakewood Fire Department came. Our, our hall or windows of our house were open, and the whole neighborhood smelled really nice. The other time was when somebody tried to jostle a window and set off the alarm, twice. If that rate of adult family homes were applied to our residents for the time I've been here, that twice would have been two hundred. So, at least anecdotally from where I live, that's about a hundred times what those calls for service should be. So, I, I imagine a lot of those are aid calls that are due to age and infirmity, and so, maybe it's only fifty times what it should be. On Tuesday, I attended the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting, which was a community forum in this chamber on the Edgewater Park. I think there were a lot of good comments on it. Mary Dodsworth, I thought, did a, an excellent effort, had an excellent presence in listening, but there were a couple of, talk about knuckleheads, people are just kind of nibbies. I bought, I bought a piece of property that's right next to a boat launch, and I don't want any boats there anymore, which I'm never real sympathetic to. But there are a lot of real issues about how you can go one way, what you can improve, what you can't improve. Edgewater Park. And so, I, I thought, I thought a lot, there were good comments that came out of it, and it was pretty well-attended, and I said, I thought, I thought Mary did an excellent job. And so, more to come. One may be something I looked at when there was some foreclosure property a number of years ago, and we didn't have any money either, is, is, I think there's a need for parking that could be removed back, and maybe we could sell. Ed Brooks suggested selling some street ends and applying it to parking. And, and I had thought of that before, and I was glad to hear somebody else think the, the same. I will be absent after the eleventh for three meetings in a row. I will be in Australia on the eighteenth, New Zealand on the twenty-fifth, and have a weekend turnover and go to a meeting in Miami on the fourth. So, I won't be back until March, well, I'll be back, but I won't be at a meeting until the eleventh. So, if Mr. Waylon can't cover that, we'll have to... Yeah. So, I, I remember when I was a, a junior lieutenant in the Navy, not a Lieutenant JG, but a relatively brand-new, oh-three, and, and my CO and XO both left, and the instructions I received were, don't do anything.
So, anything else to come before the council?
Well, we're adjourned.